Good evening, welcome to the January 16th Special City Council Meeting. Mike Urban, will you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delira.
Present.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Fageron.
Here.
Great, so welcome everyone to this, to our meeting. I appreciate definitely everyone coming out and all the applicants that have applied. This is, I don't remember a time and I, and the other councilmembers don't either remember a time when we had this, this many people that expressed interest and it's very good. It does mean it will be a long meeting though and so, and so we'll, we'll get in, we'll get into it. So, so we've had, we received 15 applications. We had one person that pulled out over the weekend, so we have 14 candidates that we're interviewing. And I want to welcome you all for, for being here. For the audience, because this is a special meeting, there is no comment, public comment as, as a part of this and public comment would also be in the way of comments or disruptions when anyone's talking or speaking, so I ask that you do, please adhere to that. For our candidates, so for, this is a long meeting. It's, if we think about the process that's going to be involved, if we keep on track, it's probably going to be at least three hours. It could most likely go longer. So time limits will be adhered to and we'll have certain time limits depending on different parts, so please, you know, stay on track with the time limit. There will be a timer that'll be up on the screen, so you'll be able to see the countdown for how much time you have. When it expires, please stop at that point so that we can move to the next candidate so that we can stay, stay on track. And then, and Mike's, and in the control room, they'll be handling the countdown timer. Your timing starts when I call on you, not when you start talking, so just be, just be aware of that as it relates for, for timing. I will, and I know for Dan, you're not able to see the countdown timer, so I will give you a 15-second countdown when you're, when you're down to there. So be, be considerate of others and space is limited, so you know, please, please stay seated. For questions, what I've done is, so we'll have as a part of the, this interview, you'll have an opportunity to do a two-minute opening in which each person will be able, will do the two-minute opening. We'll then have questions from the city council and it'll be based on the city council's seniority, either in terms of service or if it's the same number of service, then it's the number of votes that they received. So those will come if Nathan Weller asking the first question, then councilmember, I'm sorry, councilmember Weller, councilmember Wright, councilmember Parks, councilmember Guido, councilmember Fageron, and then councilmember Delira. Then I will follow with that. With the council questions and also the mayoral question, you'll have one minute in order to provide your response for that. So you'll have two minutes for your opening, one minute for the responses from the council and from the mayor, and then there'll be a time for a one-minute close. Now normally what we do is we would start on the end with the first question and then the next question, the next question, and we'd get through everybody so everybody had a fair advantage of, of getting the first question versus not having a question, having more time to think about it. Because of how many people that are here, we have fewer questions than the number of people, so what I've done is I've randomized for who starts the question. It's based on number, and so I have a, a set of numbers that are randomized, and then there's also randomized the arrow of which direction is the next person that's going to speak. And, and it'll, it'll make sense, but it's, it's really in order to not give advantage to one or the other because, you know, the first person that speaks doesn't have time to think about their question. The next person had a minute, the next person had two minutes, the next had three, you know, in on down, and so I'm trying to make it fair, a, as fair as possible through this, through this whole process. Are there any questions just related to that? Yes, Holly?
One mic.
So, and when it comes to mics, because this room's not designed for this many people, for the four people that are on this side, the mic that Tremaine has will be passed between them. On this side, the four mics, the, the mic that's in front of Steve, those will share, and then for the six, you'll share that mic. That's also the reason why we provided the hand sanitizer for you if there's concerns related to passing mics.
We appreciate. I was given instructions on how to use this microphone. If we can share that with the members who are going to be setting the microphone down, it could be loud and disruptive. There is a green light. It is on, if you could please help Dan.
Yeah. And, right, and, and Mike has a lavalier, so you do not need to pass it, I mean, sorry, Dan has a lavalier mic, so you don't have to pass it to him. That's just...
I turned it down, but now that you've described the process, you don't mind, wouldn't mind that part here, or even talk about it.
Oh.
So originally he chose not to.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So we'll pass, so, so Rick, you'll then pass the mic to Dan, Dan will pass it back.
Thank you.
If that's...
I'm not, you know, I don't want to confuse the issue. I had turned it down, but I did not know, I thought we were all going to do all individually all of our questions all at once.
Okay.
So I turned down the lavalier mic. I would love to have that.
Mike, is that still an option? Okay, so we'll, so there, so the tech is working on a lavalier for you, just for that. Any other questions from the candidates?
Is there a mic, Dan?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, Richard?
Yeah, you can just hold the little microphone so we can put it back.
Yes, you please use the mic because this is being broadcast, and so, so not just the people in the audience, but everyone else. And for those in the audience, this will be a long meeting, so if you do need to leave, please don't be disruptive in, when you do need to leave. Okay, so that, I then have one set of questions, one, it's, it's a two-part question that I'll ask and then I need each candidate to verify this, and then from there we'll get into the opening. And for this, are you a registered voter in Ward 1 of the city of Pullman and have you been a resident of Pullman for at least one year? And that's part of the requirement with the RCW. And with that, I'll just start with Tremaine, if I could get just yeses around.
Yes. I'm a registered voter, I've got, I've, 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 I've,
When did you, where did you last vote?
I last voted for the last year.
So you have not voted in the last year, so you've listed your, so that, and I'll, I'll turn to our city, I would, I would assume that's a disqualifier because you vote, you did not vote in the last year. You indicated that you're registered, that you were registered, that you, you voted in Spokane as a registered voter of Spokane.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that RCW does say that you have to have been in Pullman for a year. The one you... RCW 35A12030. Right, and if I could please remind the candidates, we do need you to speak into the microphone, so please, please pass them down here for the questions.
Wait, wait, no, we have...
Hold on Connor, we need to, Mike, yeah.
Point of clarification, may I?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did you say that he needed to be, to live in Pullman for a year or to have voted in Pullman?
No person should be eligible to hold elective status under the mayor council plan unless a person is a registered voter of the year at the time of filing his or her declaration of candidate and has been a resident of the city for a period of at least one year next preceding his or her election. Residency and voting, and voting is the, is the trigger within the limits of any territory which has been included and annexed to or consolidated within such city or construed to have, had a residence within the city. So he needs to have residence and also voting, and because you did not vote in Pullman, then you would not be eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Connor, I...
So, point of clarification, real quick.
Yes, councilmember Weller.
It is both voting and living.
It, it says residence and voting within the limits.
For that year, so, you know, do we have our lawyer in the room?
And, and Mike, are you able quickly to get ahold of that?
I just wouldn't want to disqualify an candidate without...
Right. I, if, if there was a question, whoa. So Connor, if you could hold while I continue around with this, so continue, so Steve?
Yes, to both.
Yes.
Yes, to both.
Yes, to both.
Yes, and yes? Yes, and yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Was light on on that mic? If you need, you might, you need to push the button, turn the light on, great, thank you.
Yes, yes.
So Connor, if you could hold, we have our city administrator, who's, our, our attorney, however, is remote tonight as opposed to being here, so that's why, for the interpretation.
Is he registered in Women County?
He's currently registered in Women County, but he voted in Spokane in the general election. So that's, and that's, so the, he, he meets the residency requirement, but he doesn't meet the voting requirements.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, is there any way we can just move forward with the process with him answering the questions as well, and if it turns out that it is a disqualification, then go through with that?
Well, and what, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and start with, with doing the opening statements and, and Connor will include you in that until we get a ruling from our attorney. We, we don't want to exclude you and then find out an interpretation was wrong, but I, that's why I asked the question as part of it. Okay, so if we, moving on, so two minutes for the opening, and it's going to be person number two, which is going to be Julian, so I'm, when I, with my numbers, it's one starts here and works around this way. So Julian, and it is going to go that way. So, so Connor would be at the second one.
Okay, so my name, I don't know if everyone knows me out there in the audience, Julian Matthew, I've been a resident of Pullman, purchased a house, 2000, up, used to call it Copper Basin, been here the years now, and so I've worked primarily, I'm an enrolled NOS person, I worked primarily at my tribe and just left my, in the HR area, and I have, so I have, we have a nonprofit that we incorporated, the state of Washington, that I work for now, part-time coordinator for that, NMEPO, Protecting the Environment it's called, and I serve currently on the Equity and Diversity Committee for the city council, and that was just set up almost a year ago where we're working on different issues within the city and the different areas on equity and diversity, so that's something that I feel is important. And I, I served six years United States Navy, only discharged, that's how I got my house with a VA loan, which is nice, and I did my, after I got out of the Navy, I went, I grew up in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, lived there most of my life, and after I got out of the Navy, I went to NIC, North Idaho College in Gonzaga, got my undergraduate there, then moved to Portland for a while, then moved back to my tribe in 94 and started working there, and then in 2000, I received my Master's of Public Administration from University of Idaho, so, and I've been primarily for my tribe, I worked for the state of Washington for a while here in Pullman, and so I have a lot of friends, family, and my wife worked at Wazoo, retired from there recently, and sole physician. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, Connor?
Hello, I'm Connor, I've been in Pullman the last five years. I was going to WSU and then I graduated last December. I've been working at SCL ever since. Really like living in Pullman, I think the people here are great, I think it's a great town. I don't know, I just saw this on my news feed and thought it'd be a great way to get involved with the community and actually know about what's happening beforehand, be able to give, give my input. I like to think, have a logical, open mind and strong reasoning abilities. Yeah, love to serve on the council if I'm eligible.
Thank you very much. And with that, Steve?
My name is Sean Weldon.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sean.
Oh, no problem, and I hope this won't be held against me. I did grow up in Seattle as a Huskies fan, but I've since seen the error of my ways. My wife and I met in Seattle and I got my undergraduate at Western Washington University in Bellingham, and after I graduated from there, we moved here for a job with Decagon Devices, and I've been with them for 11 and a half years. I did my master's degree at WSU, both in environmental science. My undergrad was focused on water quality and terrestrial ecology, and then my master's degree was in also water quality, but also habitat restoration. I love this community. My wife and I, you know, never thought that we'd end up in, in a small town, both being from the west side, but we have three sons that go to school here and we absolutely love raising a family in this community. It's, it's such a wonderful place to raise a family. I've served in my church and in other community organizations quite a bit. I've been involved with Cub Scouts of America, Boy Scouts of America as both volunteers and as merit badge counselors for environmental science and consulting on those things. I, I really love this community and I want to give back to it more, and so when I saw this opening, I thought this was a great way to, to do that. So that's all about me.
Thank you very much, Sean. And next, Nicole?
Thank you, my name's Little Drumhiller. I've lived in Pullman for around 20 years now, had done all of my schooling here since about 1998 and then left to Seattle for about a good five-year break and then wanted to come back, so how much I love the area. I have a small consulting practice dealing with threat management, and before that I've served as, in the dean's office at American Tire University in their School of Security and Global Studies. Before that, I was the chair of their Intelligence East Department, and along that journey, I got interested and was told that I should check out the Association of Threat Assessment Professionals with how I came to get a background and a certification in threat management, and then with that, I wanted to serve my community here, so I'm part of the Board of Directors on the Lauren McCluskey Foundation, so thank you for having me.
Wow.
Fund that resulted in the trails that go throughout the community, the Riverside Waterfall, the Three Forks Wayside, the four bridges, foot bridges that are in now, and the lighting of those bridges. I have worked, my, my motto has been to work in partnerships with my work. I find that we get more done that way. I'm involved with the Downtown Pullman Association, I am now, president of Pullman Civic Trust, I'm on Pullman 2040, and I've been on the College Hill Association and, and working with the Pullman Heritage, Heritage Show. I had the good fortune to teach at WSU for 10 years, and then I worked 20 years as the campus planner for WSU. In that role, I was able to interact with deans and department chairs on major capital projects, also minor capital projects, but some of the projects at WSU I interacted with were the improvement of Stadium Way and the construction of the biotechnology center or area that, that multiple buildings are going up on. Really, any major capital project, I was involved with that. Thank you very much.
Duck and cover. Please. Please, please, Dan.
Okay. Deb McNeil, our community members continue to aspire me. I ran for mayor for the last six months. I've asked the question, how can we improve our community's mental, physical, and economic health while working within the parameters of a limited city budget and law? Their current needs are fresh in my mind. People continue to come to me with concerns and questions. I am approachable. Just 243 votes shy of winning, Francis, good job. I want to continue to speak for them and others who chose not to vote. I do my homework. In those six months, I attended 95% of city council meetings and boards and commissions, watched almost five years of council videos, call me crazy, and read through the myths. I came away from the research admiring you all even more so than I already did. I bring a wise and updated knowledge of this community and have an intimate knowledge as a teacher, friend, and grandparent of what our community's people go through to raise their children, pay their bills, and work their jobs. I am equally comfortable spending time with part-time and full-time residents of Pullman, regardless of their educational level, economic status, and their life's journeys. I don't know everything, thank goodness, so I research by reading, using active listening with constituents, and checking in with professionals and experts in order to make educated decisions. I trust but verify. I am a research geek and I have the time. I have the right to change my mind, I believe I have the right to change my mind based on new evidence. I bring my knowledge of how the system works. I have lived the WACs and RCDs in my teaching career. I know the state laws control much of what we can and cannot do in our city, and I have not memorized the city code, but I know where to find it.
Thank you, Deb. Holly?
Thank you. My name is Holly Greystone, and like, like McNeil, I also ran in the general election, and congratulations Eric on your win again. Having secured 46% of the voting record there was a real calling to me to, to come here again and show up and appear for my community and be here with all of you guys tonight, so thank you all for what's going to be a long evening, and I appreciate that you've created a space for us to do this. With that, I'd just like to give a little bit of background, I have a biology background, chemistry background out of Eastern Washington University. I am certified, trained nationally and internationally in project management, recently certified in QPR, which is Question, Persuade, Refer, which is CPR equivalent to suicide prevention. I'm heavily involved in my community, I continue to find ways to contribute, and if I can't personally be on 100%, I have ways how I can support the people that can show up. I work collaboratively, I trust but verify, I know where to find my WACs, RCWs, I'm familiar with a lot of the funds that are going out of the state and federal entities, I have relationships with the Department of Transportation, Commerce, and the governor's office that I continue to bring issues and concerns I hear about from my community to them and try to find ways of how I could support them and then connect with many of our city council members and share what I learn. I have learned so much in this, this last year and the experiences that I have of so many complaints or hurts or perceptions of what's going on and realize that it's not personal, but it's an opportunity for us to show up and educate and help people understand, you know, there's a law that's restricting us, let's talk about how we can approach that in a way that helps us move forward. And being able to be on city council, especially right now where we're going to a downtown project that I'm all too familiar with, I look forward to being a part of that community and communication process. Thank you.
Rick?
My name's Rick Grunt, excuse me, and I've been a Pullman resident for just about 60 years. Moved here when I was 10, went to Pullman High, we were the first graduating class out of the new high school, which is now torn down, but I went to WSU, graduated, I have a bachelor of music degree in violin performance, and then actually worked downtown for two years in Corner Drugstore, loved that, and, but that wasn't going to provide a career for me, so I applied at WSU for various things, got on as an accounting assistant in the controller's office in accounts payable, then had a number of appointments throughout the 40 that I worked there, both on the department level and the college level and also in central administration. I worked in the budget office for 12 years and helped with salaries and benefits there, and then ended up in payroll, second, second stint in payroll and ended up directing the payroll office. And I don't have all the answers either, but I, what I learned in my experience is networking with people and working as part of a team, that's very, very important, and so I've benefited in 60 years of, of residence here in Pullman, and I'd like to give back to the community, and I think service is, is, is the word for you all on city council, and I appreciate you all serving, and I'd be happy to serve as well.
Thank you, Rick. And Dan?
My name is Dan Marr, and I do have all the answers, so just vote for me and don't even worry about it, okay? Actually, answers are a funny thing. I think that it's a kind of a nebulous term. I think what I do and how I deal with things is I, I think a lot and I do a lot, I elicit opinions a lot. I not only try to listen, I really try to understand. I am not a politico, I don't play games, I'm very direct, I've lived long enough that I have that right. I've lived in Pullman now for 52 years. I came as a student and I eventually majored in English education with a minor in speech. And then I, I knocked around for a couple of years, couldn't get a job, and I was finally offered a job in what is now student involvement on the WSU campus, which was student activities, and for 39 years I advised student government and various committees of the ASWSU in various types of programming, and some of these folks I advised, Tony over here, I worked with Julian way, way, way back, and in the Kwiyama, the native group, and so ultimately I've done a lot of things, powwows, earth days, major entertainment, political speakers, and I've watched the evolution of student government, who also have to know about RCWs and state laws, and I advised in terms of contracts and how to do staging, how to set up sound, all of those kinds of things. So I've done a lot of this kind of thing. As far as the community goes, I know what I, sometimes read in the papers, and I know what I...
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't give you a warning, so if you can please wrap up.
Here on the news, and all I want to do is serve my community. I'm on Kiwanis Board, Vice President, Lions, Vice President, Senior Citizens Association. Thanks very much.
Great, thank you much, and I'll make sure I give you that 15-second. So with that, Tony?
Hi, I'm Tony Poston, I'm the Executive Director of Cougs First. I graduated Washington State University in 2003. Most importantly, I'm a father of two young boys, Jack and Tyler, named after some of my favorite Cougar football players and my mentor, Thompson. I came here in, in early 2000s, I left for a couple of years and worked in the music industry. I was raised by my grandparents in North Idaho, so they were super thrilled when I decided to forego law school and jump in a van with six guys and tour in a pop punk band after college. But that was sort of the precursor to me starting my company, College Hill Custom Threads. I have chosen to keep my company here in Pullman. We've grown all across the country, but I was reading this book, The Psychology of Money, if anybody's read it, it's a great book, and there was a passage in there about continuing to move the goalposts, and if you continue to move those goalposts, like are you ever going to truly be happy? And in reading that, I was just like, wow, I have everything I could ever dream of in Pullman. My wife is a fifth grade teacher here, we love it here, we don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon, so why am I busting butt to, to grow this company across the country, open offices in Boston and LA? So I stepped down a couple of years ago and was fortunate enough to be put in the position of the Executive Director of Cougs First, which for those of you that don't know, it's kind of the Chamber of Commerce for WSU alumni and friends. kind of the Chamber of Commerce for WSU alumni and friends. And since then, we've experienced some significant growth, and it's just been exciting. I consider myself a strategic visionary. That's kind of how I operate, is making sure we look at what we're going to be, you know, 20 years down the road. And the reason that I would really love to serve on this council is I want to make sure when my kids are 17, 18, getting ready to go out in the world, that they're not trying to get out of here as fast as they can. And if they do, they want to come back as fast as they can, like I did after I made the mistake of moving to the West Side. So, thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. It's awesome to see so much people interested in this position.
Thank you, Tony. Banush.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. My name is Banush Armani, and I have so much to say, so I'll do my best. I haven't lived here as long as majority of these people have, but I think sometimes it's good to have a fresh mind coming into a community and see things with a new idea, with a new vision. Fortunately, I realized that actually what I like about this city is the same thing as you guys like. I've read the comprehensive plan, most of it. I have read the goals and priorities, the Down Town Master Plan, and everything was what I liked to see in this town. There are a few other things that I think we could do, which is quite possible and probably not even costly. But my educational background is mainly in counseling and psychology, human services, and my last degree was a master's degree in counseling. I was a counseling faculty for over 20 years. And, you know, coming into this town, I've always lived in towns that had a college or university or both because I love that environment, being around the young people and the academics. I think that's a plus. Wow, that went fast.
The time is really quick. Thank you very much. Steve.
Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you. My name is Steve Hummel. I've been in the Palouse for, this will be my seventh year. I have a bachelor's degree in environmental science and a master's degree in condition biology. My background is in water quality, aquatic toxicology, and data science. I have 12 years of professional experience, six years serving in state government for Washington State Department of Ecology and the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. This means that I've experienced serving the public, working in state government. It also means I can help navigate through Pullman, applying for grants because I understand the federal-to-state grant pipeline. I also have six years of experience in the private sector, working in environmental consulting, and also for software companies. Currently, I'm a data scientist and I work remote. Background in data science means I can help make data decisions, look for trends in the community, and also create, you know, innovative dashboards and interactive plots that the community can engage with. My hobby is fly fishing. I just started a company called Palouse Anglers right here in Pullman. It's a hub for fly fishing enthusiasts. It also serves as a point of environmental education and outdoor recreation. My wife is also extremely active in the community. She's a tenure-track professor at WSU in the Edward R. Merrill College. She does science and health communication research. We have two kids, Ava and Elliot. The oldest one, Ava, is getting ready to start school at Cameac this fall. I'm running for city council because I'd rather be an active participant in the process than just sit on the sidelines. And I think my background in data science, experience, and state government helped make me a good candidate to serve Award One and all of Pullman. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. And Richard.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Richard Elgar. I've been on the Palouse here for 20 years now. I can't believe it. I've got a 17-year-old kid, and Tony, your wife, did in fact teach him at some point. And I just want to take a moment really to acknowledge all my fellow candidates here. It's kind of amazing that there's 14 of us who care enough about the town to sort of step, put our name forward, put ourselves out there, be public about that, and I want to just say thank you to you all. So I think I'm in great company. Why do I think I can do this? Well, I think like you all, I share the same belief that Pullman can be and continues to be the kind of thriving, successful, welcoming place that I've found it to be over the past 20 years. It's a place I'm happy to bring up a kid. I like going downtown. I like the idea of planning for the future, and I feel that I can contribute to that successful growth. Why would I say that? Well, you can look at my CV. I put an abbreviated one on the application. Hope some of you read it. I think the councilors all did, and I thank you for that. I currently work at the Foley Institute. That's located at WSU. I teach and work there in public policy. I've been doing that now since 2006. I also received my PhD in political science at WSU, so I feel there's a slight connection here for getting into a job such as policymaking for a local authority. But you'll also be able to see that I've given to the community over the past nine years on the Board of Alternatives of Violence of the Palouse, last three as chair, and I was term limited out. I finally had to step down. It's a perfect time to do this. And I've got a lot of other experiences as well that might be useful. Seven years in local government in England. You can probably tell that I'm not from these parts. I've traveled extensively. I run a nonprofit in Peru, taught English in Greece. I worked at Expo 92 in Sevilla in Spain, and I feel those perspectives might really help make a positive contribution, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Richard. And for our last one, Tremaine.
Yes, Tremaine Gaither. He/him pronouns. I hail from Charlotte, North Carolina. I moved to Pullman, Washington, in age 16. I left a promising career, and I was actually doing a lot of work for the city at the time to support my partner. We came here for her career, so she became the Associate Director of Employee Relations for the Crossing College of Business, and I was a stay-at-home guy for two years. And in that time, I got to kind of just reimagine my own ways of knowing, and I became a mindfulness practitioner in the process, became a coordinator for WSU in 2019. In 2020, I received the MLK, the Dr. Martin Luther King Distinguished Sir Award. In 2021, I received the Black Faculty Excellence Award. 2022, again, the Martin Luther King Community Equity and Social Justice Award. In 2023, the President's Distinguished Service Award, recognizing exceptional dedication to altruism. And how did I, like, take off like that in such a short period of time? It's two words, building bridges. I use my skills and mindfulness and compassion. I'm a trained MBSR teacher, trained mindful self-compassion teacher, to really connect with individuals, connect across ideological lines. I'm a part of the City, the Mindful Flint Initiative, where we're bringing Black community leaders with law enforcement to bridge divides, learn mindful awareness. I teach faculty strategies to enhance classroom well-being, equity principles, resilient focus, coping skills. I'm already doing this work. I would like to extend it out in a broader way and see how these beautiful practices of mindfulness, self-compassion, cultural awareness, cultural humility can grow the sense of belonging in this community.
Great. Thank you very much for each opening. Connor, we did hear from the attorney, and as a part of voting, you certify that you are a resident of the location that you are voting at. So the fact that you voted in Spokane in last fall's election meant as a part of that voting, you certified you were a resident of that location, not of Pullman. So you technically were not a resident of Pullman for a year with that certification vote. So that's the interpretation that our attorney provided.
I haven't actually voted since the last presidential election.
Oh, I thought you said you voted last fall in Spokane.
I get a ballot in Spokane. I used it because I didn't think, oh, because I wasn't voting in Spokane, I wasn't chair of those.
Okay, so you did not vote in Spokane last fall.
No, the last time I voted was Spokane, but I didn't vote in fall.
Okay, then. It's just you hadn't changed your voting, where you'd located. So with that, I don't see a reason to disqualify at this time, Mike. Is that correct?
Claire, I've heard you are a current registered voter in Award One. Have you lived in Pullman for one year? Yes. And you were saying you've not voted the last election? No.
Then, so you have not voted anywhere else in the last year?
No.
Great. Okay, then we, then, so still qualifies, yes, so. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the city council questions. The direction changes randomly, and this question is actually, we'll start with Bobby Ryder, and then it'll move to Nicole will be the next one. So you can pass the mic to Bobby. And then with that, I'll turn to Councilmember Weller for the first question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is truly awesome. As you said, thank you all for being here and investing your time on this. I would like to know, Bobby, and then everyone else, what's that? The mic is on? Yeah, yeah, it's okay. It's all good. Thanks, Banush. Appreciate that. All right. So what do we, as a council, need to improve, and how would you make that happen?
Thank you, Nathan. My personal experience with this council and as a volunteer in this community, as a planner, as a landscape architect, I see what's missing on this council is a solid understanding of the complexities and intricacies of capital projects. I think that's what I bring to this, to this event here. If there's, the one, the essence of a community is basically its infrastructure. The only, the city government is the only thing, the only entity that builds infrastructure, and it's upon infrastructure, our roads, our sidewalks, our clean water, our sewage treatment, all of that, that the rest of us can fund. And so I feel that the capital projects is where I bring a strength. I feel that I also work while networking with different community groups, and I've demonstrated that, and I strive for solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole.
Yes, thank you for that question. One of the main reasons why I'm here tonight is that members of the community informed me that they felt that their voices were not being heard by the council, and that I bring a particular strength in making people not just feel heard, but provide them with feedback when decisions have been made and provide additional clarity in that communication. So thank you for that.
And Sean.
I think the biggest thing is probably creating new ways to communicate and with members of the community. I think I haven't been involved a lot in city council things, just because, for part of it, I didn't know how to get more involved, aside from coming to the meetings on Tuesday nights. I think that having better outreach for community members, both for them to submit feedback and also to kind of get the messages out to them, I think would be a big improvement for the community.
Thank you. Connor.
Before this, I've only attended one city council meeting, and at one, it seemed like the major issue was that no one had heard what was going on before it was too late to do anything about it. So it seems like we need to put better summaries of the topics and perhaps have archives of the topics that have been discussed on the website, more so than just having the video. People don't have to watch the videos. They can just glance over at the high-level bullet points of what's been happening and what's going to be happening in the future so that they can know if they want to attend meetings before it's too late.
I think one of the best things, as I said, I live up by the high school, and I was just, you know, when I was driving back at 3:00, back to my house, past the high school, there's a lot of traffic, and also the egress of road, I guess you call it. But I think the planning for the roads is really an important issue to me because, like, for instance, the high school, I thought I could just do a little wraparound where the buses and the school could come in, because it's a big deal. You know, it's unsafe, actually. And so I think that would be a critical, the roads and the system planning for the roads, and then also, I think the, they did take a good step with the equity and diversity because I think that's really a critical part of the whole city council environment to where we want to focus on, you know, making sure that people feel included and whether it's just regular citizens or others that we do that. So I think that's really important. But I think the planning and development in the, like someone was saying, the development of projects is critical. And I also serve on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and so I think particularly with the
Thank you, Julian. So Tremaine.
Now, I'm just going to step out on a limb here because I don't know everyone's situation personally, but I would like to, I assume that there's no one on the council with children under the age of 15. If that is the case, then I think someone that represents young families would be crucial for the city council. That voice and that perspective, I think, is very important. Dare I say it, I think diverse perspectives is also crucial when we're talking about important issues and the diverse population that you all represent. So I'll also be courageous and say that more diversity on your board would be a good thing as well.
Thank you. Richard.
Thanks. I'm a comparativist in political science, so I'd like to look at other places to see how they deal with these issues. To me, the biggest issue is people not understanding that we have to set priorities for how we spend money. There's X amount of money, and there's only so many things that can be funded. In Brazil, they, there is a city that started a participatory budget-setting process where all citizens are invited to play a part in deciding how the priorities for spending take place. Now, am I thinking we can pull every citizen in port to this space here to talk about it? Maybe not, but I think we need to find better ways to have them involved in understanding that you need to set priorities spending, and you need to communicate that. And how you do that, I don't know. I think that's why I'd like to work with you all on improving. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I feel that communication can be improved because communication could always be improved. That's communication coming into the council and also communication going back out. So there can be improved ways to, you know, receive input from the community and also, you know, summarize what you're talking about at the council and make sure everyone's up to speed and everyone's engaged. Like Connor said, when you go back and you watch the old city council meetings, it seems like the council is lacking a sense of unity and representing, you know, all of the city of Pullman, the different wards. I feel like the council needs to be more united.
Thank you.
It's been mentioned already, but I will also say it, that communication needs to be improved to the businesses and individuals, community members. The goals that the city has are great, but I think we can add other things, like have more town halls, town halls, where they can, you know, participate. Have more community events for families, and invite more diversity into town through businesses and, I don't know, there's all sorts of things that could be done to invite more people to come into this town and improve our diversity. Of course, the idea of the revitalization of downtown, hopefully that'll bring more.
Thank you. That, Tony?
Yeah, I think communication is key. Multiple people have said that, and I think we can certainly leverage technology to make sure that we're communicating really well with our residents. But also what Tremaine said, you know, representation on the council would be important, especially for those with small children that are going through our school district, as well as the business community. You know, I was the chamber president for a year, and I still have contact with a lot of the businesses, but having somebody on the council that understands, especially with the downtown, what is facing them and being a shoulder and an ear for them to go find the answers that they want to hear and understanding where they may be coming from.
And then Dan, you're up next.
I think this council, I mean, we've talked about transparency and communications. I think this council actually really needs to understand that it is the vision for the city, and I think it's really, really important that the council understands also that as a group, they have to explain why and explain and have more confidence in themselves as a group. I think that that is so important, and as you become fractionalized by special interests and your friends and all this kind of stuff, it's really hard to and your friends and all this kind of stuff, it, it's really hard to, it's really hard to keep your stability and your own confidence as a group and as individuals of the council. It's so difficult, and I think that's what you have to do, because then when you communicate, it comes out much more stronger and, and more...
And, yeah. And with that, Rick?
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I, I think communication and interaction with the community would be something that the council can grow on. I was just, I've done some doorbelling for different campaigns the last couple of years, and it's been very interesting to me, I actually love it, to, to get a feel for the, the neighborhoods of the city, and to ask people what they want, and I, I think that would be kind of a, a neat thing to do, is to reach out proactively and just face-to-face, and not to campaign for somebody, but to ask, what's, what's on your heart? And so I think, yeah, I think communication and that interaction involvement that, that I haven't been the greatest at, while I've lived here, but I'm seeing more and more how important it is, and I think the council could, could do that kind of proactive thing.
Thank you, Rick. Holly?
Thank you. There's a lot of things that our city council does amazing, and it's been talked about quite a bit about our communication piece, and so I'll also kind of talk about that as well, as it pertains to things I've realized during the construction project that's coming up soon, and the perception that the community feels that they didn't know what was going on, and I think there's an opportunity there, huge opportunity for us to do, like, have town halls, or like Rick said about going door-to-door, or going to the different parts or different communities, and talking to people, meeting them where they are, and holding meetings at times that people can come to and not have to leave work. I think those are, those are really important, but also explaining the what, the how, the why, and the money behind the decisions our city council does. Now, there's been some effort in that way, as part of goal the city council has, and I think we have an opportunity to continue to grow. As evidence here, we have 14 people that showed up. Most of these people said, when they introduced themselves, they saw it on our social media.
Thank you. And the last one, Deb?
Yes, thank you. Probably, what I've heard in the last six months is that people don't feel like their voices are being heard. I, too, like to canvas, as crazy as it might seem, it's one of my favorite things to do, although I know that's not favorite for some other people, so I would, I would take the lead on that. In terms of communication, I believe that we rely on social media too much, and so I would look at how we can reach the generations, in terms of the seniors, our elders, to the seniors in high school who vote, and who are going to vote in the future, and I believe that we can find ways to educate people and to communicate with them using their sources of news. Where do they get their news? I mean, just think about the myriad of things it could do. I also believe that transparency is extremely important.
Okay, thank you. And you could pass the mic to Rick. Rick's going to start the next set of questions. And to randomize, the arrow stays in the direction that it's pointed, so Holly will be number two. And with that, Pat Wright is the one asking this question.
So, this question is going to enable you to continue those thoughts that you've just raised regarding communication. And so what I would like to know is, to have you each describe your experience working with different stakeholders, and, such as businesses, community organizations, residents, and the city of Pullman staff, because they come into the picture quite a bit as stakeholders. So, Rick, what's yours?
Thank you. I, like I said, I've done some doorbelling, and I've enjoyed that, and going door-to-door. I haven't been on a committee, really, for Pullman. I've come to, to several, several, if not numerous, I probably say several, city council meetings to learn what's, what's being discussed, kind of get a feel for what a council does. Stakeholders, so, I, I don't know, I'm coming up with the start of a...
...bring some insight to opportunities there as well. I've gone in and spoken at the high school, a couple elementary schools, I volunteer a lot with community programs, and I think there's a great opportunity there, too, to have more programs and more opportunities to continue to engage our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deb?
May I ask for a re, re-reading of that, please?
Describe your experience working with different stakeholders or stakeholder groups, you will, such as businesses, community organizations, residents, and included in that would be the members of the city of Pullman staff.
All right, thank you. This is a big list. I had a small business in downtown for 20 years, 17 actually downtown and three at the house, and I believe that it's always been a sense with me to understand that our businesses create the reason why many of us are here. If there is not enough business, there's not enough of us, and they'll go somewhere else. So, I have been listening to small businesses. I, during my campaign, I stopped in at as many businesses as I could, and I heard all sorts of things that they just have concerns about. So, a small business, as far as our staff is concerned, I've stayed away from staff because they are so overworked, that I can, I can work with them once I'm on the city council, but to this point, I've allowed them to do their job.
Okay, thank you. And Bobby?
Thank you. I think it's a great question, Pat. In my, my resume, it indicates I was a planning tech for the city of Pullman. I have also worked as assistant planner for Whitman County, and also as planning, the campus planner for WSU. I also have, like I said, 40 years of working with civic groups, Pullman Civic Trust, Downtown Pullman Association, College Hill Association, League of Women Voters, and so forth. Most recently, I've worked with the Downtown Pullman Association extensively on two major projects. One is, I wrote a grant, we, we knew that the doors would be closed in this coming summer because of construction, and I wrote a grant for a total project cost of 103,000, 103.5,5,000, with 20,000 in match, and have worked with the business owners on that project.
Thank you, Bobby. Nicole?
Yes, thank you. I actually look for to engaging more within the community, just within this capacity, and in other capacities where I serve, on different committees. Socially, I've made friends with a lot of different small business owners, listened to some of their stories and their trials and tribulations, and then offered them resources where I knew where to look, whether or not that was my responsibility or not. Same thing with working with nonprofits, I love to be engaged with them as much as possible, and in terms of the city, I recently was asked to be part of the Pullman Police Advisory Council, and I look forward to working more and engaging with our first responders in this community.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you. In my position at Meter Group, I'm a product manager, so my, my whole job is juggling different stakeholder groups. Part of my time is spent, you know, directly interfacing with clients with what they need, what they want, and trying to, trying to develop products and solutions for that. I work with a lot of different businesses, I work with a lot of different government agencies as far as data collection analysis, and, and working towards improving products towards their needs. So I'm, I'm very familiar with this process. I, you know, on a, a personal level, I've also worked in, in our community, in leadership on roles with my church, as I said, with other community organizations, to try and help meet the needs that people are actually facing in the community. So I'm, I'm used to working with diverse groups, trying to take technical, sometimes technical data, and giving it into a, a place that's easy for everybody to understand, both the technical and non-technical people as well. So, I have a lot of experience with this.
Thank you. Connor?
With regards to local government stakeholders, I'd say I have a clean state, or a clean slate so far. At, at work at SEL, I work with a lot of different product groups and different software, hardware and firmware groups to get things done. There's a lot of communication there, just trying to coordinate everyone so we know that we have the same goals and we're on the same page about everything. At WSU, as a, on the, I was the vice president of the Student Library Advisory Board. We pretty much had no power, but it was still a good time. That's about it for me.
Currently, I'm on the social, or Equity and Diversity Inclusion Committee, and so I work, and then also on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, so I've met a lot of the business people that are in it, I already knew them, you know, just from living here and knowing their businesses, and, but I've been doing that for almost a year, I believe, and so I've gotten to a lot of the business and a lot of the business issues that people are dealing with. I know the downtown construction was a major issue, but, so that is my main involvement. But in my other jobs, I work with federal agencies, I've written a lot of grants, I'm a grant reviewer for the federal government and things like that, and I, like I've said, I've traveled a lot. I was in American Legion, I'm pretty tight with the veterans group here in town, and so I have a lot of experience and a lot of connection with the different groups that are here in Pullman.
So, I was, for a year, I was the interim director of community and public official Washington State University. I represented WSU Pullman through engagement with local boards, such as the Pullman Chamber, where I served on that board. I was, you know, tasked with entering town gown relationships with stakeholders in the Pullman community. I was charged with developing the community engagement metrics for WSU Pullman Strategic Plan, where I served alongside various city staff. I was, also played an instrumental role in the DEI Committee. I was charged with conceptualizing, conceptualizing and establishing the groundbreaking DEIB Committee for the city of Pullman, I think that's ordinance 20, that, 22-20. I was part of drafting that mission, mission statement, and I closely collaborated with city officials, diverse stakeholders, as well as city staff leaders in the community. I really wanted to know their thoughts and what was important to them in shaping the policies and practices for this particular committee.
Thank you. Richard?
Great, thanks. I have my glasses on to read my tiny writing there. In my role at the Foley Institute, I've met tons of community members at our events there. I've collaborated with League of Women Voters, with the Chamber as well, and the Common Ministry at WSU. And as a professor at WSU, I meet a lot of students, and even though many of them aren't living here forever, they are residents for the time they're here, and I think that's a really important thing to remember. Sometimes that, that gap between the two gets really forgotten, and I think that's something to work on. For the city, I've run a badminton class through Parks and Rec, that was kind of fun, and I've also contacted many staff members here at the council. It's often about, you know, things we're concerned about, you know, street lighting, is it too bright, or about street signs, can we make it all the way up Spring Street without crossing over, you know, without mirrors maybe to see those blind spots on the hills? And I've also helped set up a small community association on Pioneer a couple of years ago. Out of time.
Thank you. And Steve?
Working in state government, it was a requirement to collaborate and coordinate with a ton of stakeholders on any given project. So from one project off the top of my head, which is a dam breach down in Sooton County, worked with the Sooton County, Sooton County Conservation District, Naz Perce Tribe, Ecology, where I worked, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, Washington Department of Transportation, the AG's Office, Army Corps of Engineers, NOAA Fisheries, and of course, private landowners and private contractors. So, kind of have a lot of experience in state government. It's just one project, and of course, communication is the key whenever you're collaborating.
In my previous role as a faculty at a community college for over 20 years, I was very involved with the outside legislature on policies, on funding for community colleges, and different programs, because those, those programs are what help a lot of the students be more successful. Here, I, I've been able to connect with a few of the council members and talk about various issues, and I've recently, as a few months ago, I started joining the Interfaith Connection, and I'm on my HOA board where I live on Sunnyside Hill, and I volunteered with Cougar Aquatics because my son swims for them.
Thank you. So Tony's up, and then Dan will be the last one after Tony.
Yeah, in my role with Cougs, first I speak to business owners every single day, that's, that's my job. Many of them are in Pullman. I also served two terms with the Pullman Chain Bombers Board, one term as president. I was, I'm, actually I'm on my second term at Pullman Regional Hospital Foundation Board, was on the Citizens for Pullman Regional Committee, hosted a barbecue at Sunnyside Park. I was also in the Next Era of Excellence Campaign Cabinet with former Mayor Johnson. We raised seven and a half million for Pullman Regional Hospital. I co-chair Elizabeth Chilton's Chancellor's Advisory Council, as well as sit on the WSU Athletics Advisory Council, which is a lot going on with that right now, as you guys know. What else? I speak, I'm glad somebody brought up students, too. I, that's a forgotten so far in these comments demographic, and I speak to classes almost every week, whether it's about entrepreneurship or leadership, so I talk to them quite often.
Thank you. And then Dan, you'll be the last one for this question?
I, there we go. I worked heavily with public planning folks when we did that eight-year-run homecoming parade, worked heavily with those folks. I also, with the international students, worked a lot with the park system and with a lot of the churches in terms of developing family-oriented events for international students, and, and I've worked a lot with the Chamber, mainly because they pay me for doing gigs, but I also worked heavily with them, and they were kind enough to do that whole star on the Walk of Fame thing that you guys are going to take away. So, which is a fun thing. It's, it's fun to work with people on developing things like that.
10 seconds.
What's that?
10 seconds.
And then I enjoy doing all of that.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so, the next question is going to be Ann Parks, and Tremaine, you'll be starting this one. And, at randomization, the arrow is still the same direction, believe it or not, so the odds are it's most likely going to flip.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say, as the Ward One representative, I'm really excited to here, get to know some of you, meet some of you, and learn more about each of you. You've provided a lot of good input and information that whomever is chosen, it would be interested in working on some of those projects together, and, and even if you're not chosen, we could still perhaps work on some things, that you have some really good ideas. My question is, residents, business owners, and council members sometimes have strong and differing views on an issue. Describe how you will work through these views to reach a decision, and how you will respond to constituents whose views you did not support.
Okay. Is it too much to ask you to repeat that? Because it's a too...
No, no, it, it kind of is. So, residents, business owners, and council members sometimes have strong and differing views on an issue. Describe how you will work through these views collaboratively, or, or not, to reach a decision, and how you will respond to constituents whose views you did not support.
Okay, so, to answer your first question, I've been in a lot of situations where I am sort of the mediator between two groups on different ideological lines, and the first thing that's very important is to perhaps create community agreements, to, those community agreements are sort of guidelines that guides the conversation. One community agreement is to show respect for one another. Another could be using I and the pronouns when talking, in other words, not talking at others, but talking from one's own personal experience, okay? Another way of doing it is engaging in storytelling, letting people tell their stories, and hearing their stories, and I think deep listening is important. If someone is sharing something that I may not agree with, then hey, I could say something as simple as, hey, I'm not there yet, but help me get there, you know, keep talking. I want to understand, even if I don't agree.
Great, thank you. And then Richard? So, Tony, if you could pass the microphone down, please? Thank you.
So, I think you can answer that, both parts, actually, in one way, really, which is to remind ourselves that sometimes, no matter how... that sometimes, no matter how hard we believe in something, no matter how well we think we've made a point, no matter how convincing we think our arguments are, sometimes in a democratic setting, you don't win the day. And we just have to learn to accept that. And it's important, when we go to stakeholders, different ones, we can say, look, your views were listened to. We argued them through. We just need that transparency to say, yes, you were listened to. But at the end of the day, the consensus went the other way. And sometimes that consensus will go against me. And I value the skill of conflict management and resolution. I worked in complaints, local government, in education complaints. As you can imagine, a lot of complaints in education about all kinds of things. You have to learn to listen to people and then respond to them appropriately by letting them know they were listened to. But sometimes their argument did not carry the day. And you can just say that you did your best.
Thank you. And Steve?
Never going to know it's like to walk in someone else's shoes. And we can do the right thing for different reasons. So what I learned, working with cattle ranchers, trying to get them to put in trees, riparian buffers to protect water, we have different upbringings, we have different values, we can get the trees in the ground for different reasons. It could be less time on the combine for you, it could be you want more birds on your property. Talking through it and finding solutions, even if our values are different, we can find a way.
Yeah, I was raised primarily by my grandparents. And my grandma always said, you attract more flies with honey than vinegar. I'm sure some of you have heard that. So I think the first step is making sure that there's a level of civility in these conversations. I also think, like what Tremaine said, is let them tell their story. I think some of the most proud people are business owners. They put their blood, sweat, and tears into their business, their livelihood. And so listen to understand, not necessarily listen to respond. I think that's important, because they're going to just want to vent a little bit. So let them get that out. But primarily, I think my communication style is to be civil and know that you're not always going to be right, but you can do the right thing. And that might be something that maybe you don't believe in, your one vote on a council. But if it's for the good of the town, then that's what you got to vote for, accept, I should say.
Thank you. Dan, you're up now.
I think the really crucial thing is looking at how you believe in this. I would and do believe in the community. I believe in Ward One. I believe in the council. And I would believe in many individual projects. And so I think when I would work with constituents whom I did not support in my ultimate decision, I think ultimately, they would have to know, they can trust me. And they would have to know that I did it out of a sense of my belief in them, and that ultimately, even though I disagreed with them, at the same time, they would still know that I did it out of a strong belief, and that ultimately, I still had a strong respect for those individuals. Everybody has a right to their values, and everybody has a right.
10 seconds.
And sometimes, they might develop an understanding that they didn't even think about.
Time's coming up.
And so.
Go ahead and finish your statement.
Well, and just so therefore, it's all about everybody believing and trusting everybody else.
Thank you. I appreciate you bearing with me communicating on this. So Rick?
I like that about gaining the respect, that people would know who I would, who I am, and how, that I'm really after the best for the community. I think, again, asking questions to make sure that we understand. I think I would talk to some of you, and I asked that question, what do you do when there's differences of opinions? And I think one of you said, just to make sure that they know that you've listened. And I think asking those kinds of questions is really good. And also, the being able to communicate with each other on the council and to talk about those things would be really important.
Thank you.
Thank you. With background in science, as well as project management, I look at things at their face value and start everything with a positive intent in mind, whether it's the information being handed to me, or a story being told to me. I always go with a positive tent from everybody, myself and from the people that I'm communicating with. And that really helped a lot in my time in the Downtown Pullman Association. There was a lot of frustration from our business owners and property owners and just community in general that want to express their frustration. They think you're the source of all those answers. And so they just really, like many of us have said, they just want to feel heard. They want to feel understood. They want to understand the why. And if we come at it with a positive intent, even if we have a different idea about how we're solve that problem, I'm confident that we're able to find those solutions together because we're coming at it for the service of our community. And often, when we do that, we're able to find a common ground to move forward. And I think that's really important to keep in mind. If we can do that, we will be able to solve a lot of things going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb?
Yes. Everybody needs to understand the issue. What is the issue? And why is it that we're upset, or they're upset, or we're all upset? People want to be heard. And sometimes, that being heard is stepping back and saying, what is the issue? Are we all on the same page? So transparency, of course, education of the issue, not hiding anything, not saying, well, the staff said this, or we can't do that, or whatever, as long as it's state law-driven. And it's the ability to collaborate, of course. As a classroom teacher, all my life, all of this was happening all day long. And at the end of the day, as a teacher, I'd had to say, be willing to change your mind with new information.
Bobby?
So I think the first thing that's important, that whatever decision-making process you have as a council, needs to be well-designed so that people, in that design, people need to know that they've been heard. They can see that they've been heard, even if the decision isn't exactly what they want, but that they've been heard well enough that you're able to explain to them what the other side of that is. And sometimes, I don't feel that they can. It goes kind of one way, and it doesn't come back, doesn't come back. So the other thing I know is that people will support things that they care about. And so you need to find where that common ground is of where you can help them achieve the things they care about. Thank you.
Thank you. So in thinking about the strong differing views and working through them, there's been a lot of great glints around the room already. And I think it comes down to trying to work together and find common ground and getting down to the root of the issue at hand. And then from there, seeing where individuals might be talking past one another, might be letting their frustrations rot, because everybody is very passionate about what they want and what they believe that the community needs, and whether or not their voices are being heard. I have been a roadblock for decision-making, and I've actually been thanked for it because of my thoroughness and my kindness in the approach by using emotional intelligence to work through the problem and continue to provide effective feedback.
Thank you, Nicole.
I mean, Sean. No problem. So I'm kind of the quintessential middle child. I'm a, I try to be a peacemaker in everything that I do. My wife and I often have discussions where we disagree, and we always kind of go back to this idea of hearing each other out, making sure that we clearly understand the issue, and then making sure that we're responding with empathy and with the caring and the future goals in mind. I think that most people that are the loudest are the ones that feel that they're not being heard. And so giving them that opportunity to be heard, even if it means holding extra meetings to really get that point of view across, is key in this. And as far as people that, you know, feel that you didn't vote their way, and reporting back to them, I think accountability is the key to that. Not just accountability, but honesty with the process. We do have constraints as a city council. We do have constraints both in law and in money, and making sure that those things are fully understood, the people that we represent, I think is important.
Thank you, Sean. Connor?
I think it's really important just to listen to what people have to say, and to try and see things from their perspective, even if you have a different perspective. And obviously, you can't make everyone happy all the time, but it's important to be willing concessions, even if you don't want to, and to meet in the middle. And with that, yeah, you can try and appease people more often than not. Anecdotally, I guess I used to work at a pizza place, and I feel like the level of vitriol that you'd get from some customers that had the wrong order delivered an hour and 45 minutes after they played it, is probably similar to what you might hear from some constituents sometimes. But really, they just wanted to be listened to well, and just to vent half the time and eventually be happier.
Thank you. Julia?
Okay, having worked in human resources, I was always the mediator between management and staff, regular staff. So I think it's always, what I used to do was meet with both parties, staff and management, find out, listen to both sides. And I think that's really critical with decision-making for the council, is make sure that, I guess you can't make sure, but try to ensure that the process for developing, like say, a project or decision-making that is public. And to me, if you want to meet with people, to me, the best way, like I've always told people, email is the worst way to communicate. You know, what I usually feel is important is meet face-to-face. And so I think it's important to meet face-to-face with constituents. And I've been, like I said, I serve on Naz Perce Tribe of Housing Authority. We've had people come in there and just rant and rave at us because they feel we're making a bad decision, or it may not go against them. And I guess one thing I would say in regard to a decision that was made, or a vote that was made, with the legalization of marijuana in the state of Washington. I wasn't really for that at first, but then, you know, because I don't smoke marijuana. But.
Everyone's going to come to you afterward to say, what was that? So the next question, Dan, you'll be starting with this question. And it did turn. It's still randomization, but so we'll go Dan, and then from Dan down to Tony. And with that, Councilmember Guido.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for turning out. I do just, it's been said, but I do want to thank you for stepping up and going out on a limb for your community. I'm going to start with Dan, and this is a perfect one for you, Dan, because you mentioned the whole idea of our city council being visionaries and setting a vision. What do you think should be the council's strategic goal, one of them at least, for the next 10 years?
I think one of the strategic goals would be able to demonstrate in a clear and concise and meaningful manner that the council is moving forward. You know, you can't stay static. You either progress or regress. And that's how you should manage your lives, actually. And so the point is, is if you can say to the community truthfully and sincerely that five years ago, we were here, and now we are here as a council, and then we are going to be here in another five years, and then you can do it comprehensively and in a concrete, non-abstract manner, that's the way, that's one of the strategic goals you should reach. That is so important.
10 seconds.
Because if you can do it for yourself, you can do it for the whole community and demonstrate that.
Thank you. Tony?
Yeah, I love that. I think a lot of people overestimate what they can do in a year, but underestimate what they can do in 10 years. So I kind of think, you know, it's not to be the best, but it'd be better than you were yesterday if we keep moving forward, like Dan said. But I think really, it's coming up with a vision, too, of what that looks like. You know, I envision a downtown where my kids can go on a play structure, go grab coffee or ice cream, and I can sit there and watch them on the slide or whatever. You know, we have a town eight miles away where that happens. Why don't we have that in Pullman? So that's just one portion of the vision. But really, painting that picture for the residents of what this place can be, so they are truly hashtag Pullman Proud. But I think it really does start with just being better than you were the day before, and continuing to move the needle in the right direction.
I think planning for growth for the city is highly important because I've lived, well, I lived in Bellingham for three years before moving here. And I had lived there previously, when it wasn't as big as it is now and as populated. With that growth, a lot of crime has come in, a lot of homelessness has come in. So we need to plan for growth. It's going to happen. It's a definite possibility. And just making the town more family-friendly, offering a variety of opportunities for families and their kids to enjoy the city.
Thank you. Steve?
Sure. Only working towards a way to recruit and retain new businesses downtown. Of course, it would be great to, in this five years from now, have all of the abandoned buildings transitioned into something else. Five years from now, I'd like to see the aquifer in a place where we found a way to get water back into it, have some recharge happen, or have the pump out at the Snake, South Fork, or the Palouse. Five years from now is already too late, but we need to figure out the aquifer problem right now.
So what a big question here, the strategic goal. What would it be? And let's just take one, improve the quality of lives for all Pullmanites. And that would include businesses, residents, the students who are here, maybe more temporarily. But I used, in a previous life, I had a job in performance management. And it doesn't matter if you've got a vision for something unless you've got a way to measure what you're doing, whether that's through surveys of the public, whether it's through setting yourself some goals for the future, you know. If it's the aquifer, are we using less water? Do people have access to more play structures? Is it easier to get to the businesses downtown? Do we have a walkable town? Have we got a nice way to work with, for example, mimosa, so that we can see that there and somehow work with it? What about the arterial road, if that goes ahead? Will that stop too many trucks going downtown? Now, we can measure those, but it's a big one. Maybe we can do it. I'd like to help do so. Thanks.
Thank you. Tremaine?
Okay, 10 years from now, let's eradicate food insecurity. I don't think there's a reason for anyone to go hungry in this town. I like the police station and everything, but when it's cold outside, I don't want to sleep in the police station's lobby. So maybe if there were some other spaces, whenever it's cold outside, to provide for people without housing. I think that's something we can think about in the next 10 years. And like others said, you know, prepare for growth, measure it, measure the climate, and see if we can increase the satisfaction of the residents in Pullman. See if we can increase minority-owned businesses here in Pullman over the next 10 years, maybe a few percentage points. Those are the first things that come to mind. I would love some play structures for our kids in the next 10 years as well, more rec centers, maybe a rec center, something like that, if I'm really dreaming right now. But those are just some ideas that I would like to see in the next 10 years.
Thank you. Julian?
I guess for me, seeing a vision would be to look at, for the city of Pullman, to look at alternative energy, solar power, because I see with this gas issue, you know, we may need to look at different forms of energy to come into this town. For the, with all this new housing, I think most of them are electric or gas. So I think that's something we need to look at, or the city, I'm not saying we. And I also feel that expansion, if you're talking about a vision, like someone was saying about, you have to measure, I think they need to purchase land, then, if they're going to put in new businesses. I would like to see a lot of new businesses, you know, restaurants and that type of thing. Nothing against the current ones. And also, I think there needs to be more incentives, because I know being on the Chamber right now, a lot of the staffing is really bad because of the, after the COVID, it's staffing. So I think maybe there are some incentives for small businesses in Pullman regarding to staffing, or some way to keep more staff for these businesses, so they can be open longer and generate more revenue. So, but I think the vision has to be land purchasing, alternative energy for the future, because 10 years from now is a long time, and the current issues with energy are not going to go away.
Thank you. Connor?
I agree with a lot of what other people have said. Obviously, Pullman's going to, it seems like Pullman's just going to keep growing and growing. Along with that, it's important to avoid some of the issues that come with being a larger town. And so just trying our best to grow in a responsible manner, trying to avoid issues before they happen, instead of trying to fix them once they already have. I definitely agree with what Steve was saying about trying to ensure our water future, because with a higher population, obviously, more water is going to be used. So we need to figure that out before it becomes a bigger problem or becomes more expensive. I yield the rest of my.
Sean?
So I had two things that kind of came to mind. As we went around before, one of the biggest things that was brought as an issue or room for improvement was communication between the council and the citizens. I think working on a plan, you know, multi-pronged approach plan, where we have not social media interaction, but also. approach plan where we have not social media interaction, but also more town halls, more visibility from the council to people, and also having that that feedback from the people to the council is important. And I think the other thing is making sure that there's more affordable housing in in town, whether that's tax incentives for housing projects and things like that, but making sure that there is more. If we're going to be having that growth, we want to make sure that we have affordable places for people to to live when they move in here.
Thank you. Nicole?
Yes, as I understand it, the city council has already established a series of goals that they're seeking to achieve. And I think that what needs to happen is to establish priorities for those goals in the order in which they're supposed to occur by working with the community. Because if everything is a priority, then in the words of my mentor, nothing is a priority. And to, while doing that, also remain on budget or under budget.
I think that the way to improve our communication is certainly through more community connectivity. And so I'd like to see more of that going on. And I feel that one area in that we could accomplish this would be through rail banking, all of our in-town rail lines, and creating more abilities for neighborhoods to connect it. The other thing about having linear parks is they're very cost effective. They're, and their railroads travel, they're flat territory. They're the best places for people to bike, to ride and walk. So we have alternative transportation. Not only that, it benefits the entire community, and I think that that would be a laudable goal. Obviously, that comes along with planning for growth, and we need to have more places for people to recreate, to recreate. Thank you.
Deb?
I've said for the last six months when I was running for mayor, that number one issue is water. Without water, we don't have a community, and people will leave. So water is, and I believe it was Steve that said, it's too late, but it's not too late to think about doing something now, because it will take time. So number one, water, I've said that forever. Number two, neighborhoods, people in the neighborhoods, when I was canvassing, the biggest concern was they didn't want to lose their neighborhoods, because they felt like the city was getting so big, there weren't four hills anymore. And so I've always been a belief that we need to think about our infrastructure, which includes our police and our fire and our housing. And do we overbuild in housing and then try to catch up with our infrastructure, like Benush said with Bellingham, or do we start looking at our infrastructure system now?
Thank you. Holly?
Well, I'm just going to pick up right where Sheila off. Our, our goals that we have now are great, and we do need to, we need to prioritize those. The biggest priority is our infrastructure. We have grown so much that we have one-way roads that we expect our fire trucks to turn around in. We have a fire truck that sometimes works, and it's our ladder truck. We have limited our ability to perform activities to support our community. And two times this month, and I'm aware of, we had to triage calls because our firefighters weren't available. We are growing so fast that a critical infrastructure is with our police, our fire, our hospital, our city staff. All of these need to be built up in order to continue to support the growth of our community, but also help sustain it in the interim. And water is a key part of that infrastructure. We had a lot of opportunities to talk with experts. We've had opportunities to interact on a study, and I understand our city did not participate in the most recent one. We have opportunities out there to engage with our community to address those needs. And I think where we can start is infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
I, I, I think that I'd like to see our, our city be more connected. I like that someone said neighborhoods connected. I was at the water tower a year or so ago and looking over our town and and realized, you know, there's nice homes and and everything. But I think people are siloed sometimes. They're, they're in their homes, they're not, they're not connected, and they're not involved. So I think all these things are great, water, business, those are important, the infrastructure. But I think primarily, I'd like to see greater involvement, greater community somehow.
Great, thank you. So the next question, Steve, you'll be starting this one, and the arrow's back the other way. And with that, Eric Fagerin has the question.
Thank you so much. I just want to again echo just thank you for being here today and showing interest in applying for council. Just hearing your experience in resumes can't help but reflect how woefully unqualified I feel being council. So I just want to thank you for that. So my question has to deal with future generation and the youth. Engaging younger generations in community affairs is vital for a thriving city, especially Pullman. What ideas do you have for increasing youth involvement in not only Ward One, but Pullman as a whole? Absolutely. As I said before, I started a business called Palouse Anglers. I strongly believe in outdoor recreation, improving mental health, and it also leads to community building. There's good data on groups of people who go camping together, come back from the camping trip, more connected than they were before. We have good data on, you know, fresh air, blue skies, leading to improvement in mental health. So making more friends in the community, reaching out to people who didn't have the opportunities to go outside before, and lifting people up who didn't have the chance to learn some of the skills like fishing, or camping, or hiking. And the stronger the Pullman community gets, the more, again, we can lift up everyone else around us. Thanks.
Thank you. Benush?
I have an 18-year-old who's sitting back there. And I think the first thing he would say is he wants to see more trails, more opportunities for outdoor activities. And well, he's a swimmer, but he loves any type of outdoor activity. And it's very limiting here. So finding what, I mean, basically surveying the youth that we have and finding out exactly what they would like, what's important to them, and see how we can provide those activities, those opportunities for them. There is a Love Pullman, I'm sorry, in another city that I lived in, several cities would get together in their own town, residents were invited to a Love, whatever their name of the city was. So it would be like Love Pullman. And people would come and volunteer their services.
Thank you.
To the city.
Tony?
Yeah, I'm not sure youth or young adults, but I think one of the demographics that we can certainly help engage more with is the student population. I think, you know, I was fortunate enough to be able to stay here after graduation, and I would hope that more students consider that. But I was in a lodging tax committee meeting earlier today, actually, in the same room, and we were talking about youth sports and how that really is a, is an opportunity here in Pullman with better ball fields, maybe a rec center. I don't know if anybody's been up and seen the one in Post Falls. They have an amazing field, and there's always food trucks there because they have soccer tournaments. But like she said, I think we, that's, we don't ask our youth what they want. I think that's a missed opportunity, is is being out there, speaking to the students, not just at the university, but in the public schools, asking parents what their kids are into and finding out their opinions. Because sometimes, you know, kids need to be heard. I have a three-year-old, he needs to be heard, so.
So Dan, you're up.
I think ultimately, you are all correct. It's about asking the youth what they want. Now, they may not always know what they want because they don't know what opportunities are there to work off of. If you're going to ask the youth, what do you want, you have to be able to provide it. You have to be able then to come up with ways that you can accommodate what they need and want, not just sports and trails and all that. That's way cool. But there are other things like, like there's, there are even high school students and middle school students that are interested in politics, that are interested in civic government, youth legislatures, that kind of thing. And so I think ultimately, we have to take a look at broad interests all across the board. Look at the science fairs around here.
10 seconds.
How well they're, how well they work.
Thank you. Rick?
I like all these ideas, too. I love going to our kids' sports events. But I also believe, I'm a man of faith, and I think that the inner goings on in in hearts of kids are very important. And it goes beyond just activities. So I would love to see churches connected and, no, I don't know how it would look, but our children are going to be facing some very interesting times. And I believe faith is going to be very important.
Thank you. Holly?
Thank you. People find their way to Pullman for various different reasons, but the top three reasons are the university, SEL, and our landscape. When our spring and summertime are in full bloom, we get people from all over the world to photograph and paint and express their ideas, what this community looks like. And they take advantage of our trails. And building on what Bobby had mentioned earlier, our rail banking opportunities are there. It's continuing to have those conversations with the different governing bodies, with the different counties, and our state representative foresee that happening. Helps us connect our, our hills and our communities, especially our students who are also residents of our community, to be able to connect with the rest of this community as well. With that, I would say on, I can't remember who said it, but ask, ask the youth, what would you like? We have an opportunity to expand our ballpark area down by Rip Park. We can look at expanding that and adding additional parking. We can have outdoor activities and events that we sponsor or support or encourage. We have various different commissions and committees that we can outfit out with individuals who have ideas in that area. Thank you.
Deb?
Yes, thank you. The essence of who I am is being able to talk with kids from little to big. And so the biggest thing is to ask, just ask them. In my pain, I spoke with fourth graders, boy, they'll tell you what they want. They'd be great brainstormers. Middle school students, they want a place where they can spend their money. And I'm, whoa, you have money? And our high schoolers, I went and spent time with seniors all day. They have phenomenal ideas. Whether or not they can be implemented is, is not the situation here. It is, how can we make it work? So we need to have them provide information for us. I have mentioned puzzle days before. They just want to be out, they want to be downtown, they want chess tournaments in town, they want places to be, battles of the band.
Bobby?
Okay. I think we, as mentioned, I think we need more programs and events for, for students. But I think some of the ways that we can get to that kind of programming is going to be working with the schools, because if they can continue things that they've been doing throughout the year and in terms of, in a more applicable way. I think that where they really have an experiential learning experience throughout the summer, that some kids may want to continue that. But those that just want to relax and kick back, they would really like to have more trails. And so I think we need to get at rail banking. But I also think that our, we need to work with our children in terms of if they're interested in whatever they're interested in. And again, ask them their, their insight on that, and then also insight on how they'd like to help us improve their knowledge of how to have appropriate relationships. So that's something that they can carry with them throughout their lives.
One of the things that I really liked working with the Boy Scouts of America was doing the citizenship and the community merit badge, which I was a counselor for. And I had councilman records who used to be on the city council here come and talk with my group several times. And that was the first time that they had often met a city counselor or knew what a city counselor had done. I think having these, these, presenting these kind of ideas of this is what the local city government does, this is what we do as a city council, to children, kind of helps them understand better what, what's going on in this community. And I think having maybe, you know, working with the schools to have a, an assembly where a member of the council can go and talk to kids at all the, the, the schools in town, I think would be helpful. I think that having, like, like many people have said, activities, not just with the K through 12 students, but also with university students would also be helpful because they are a part of our community as well.
Thank you. Connor?
I personally think it's really important just to encourage kids outside and actually enjoy the area and to take advantage of the beautiful area that we live in. And a good way to support that is just to increase, or just to make outdoor areas inviting and continue funding our parks department, make sure that they're nice, and trying to prove and expand anywhere we can with parks and outdoor recreation. Maybe I'm being selfish because I would love that for myself, but I think kids and youth and everyone would enjoy that, too. I think it's always important to support youth sports and just youth sports facilities. I feel like, I mean, studies show that kids that are involved in stuff like that are a lot, they're healthier and happier and less likely to get into trouble. So.
Thank you, Julian?
Okay, I think it's really important to, like people were saying about asking youth what they want. One thing I do know that, like I said, down at the tribe, we have 34th and 5th graders come every Wednesday. And we went to Leno Festival, we saw our canoe they helped carve, took a year. And then they, every Wednesday, they do arts and crafts, beadwork, carving paddles, carving on the canoe, and it's outdoors. And so they love it. They come there, last weekend, Wednesday they came, it was freezing cold. But I think you have to have activities. One thing that I've always known is that Warler Marsh, right across from the high school, I'd like to see the city purchase that made into a green space, and we developed that. I know there's deer and foxes that live down there. But I think we need to develop green spaces within the city, whether they're for hiking and other activities. And I think the youth parks and recreation department is probably a good place to start because they already have activities and programs. But the high school, everyone doesn't play basketball, everyone doesn't play football. And so there's a lot of people that want to do other activities. And so I think you kind of always rely on the school system to provide all the athletic activities in the community.
Jermaine?
I agree. Ask the youth what they want, and ask the parents what they want. Can we get a parents' night out? Can we just drop the kids off at Parks and Recs and leave them there? I, I want something like that. What about more childcare centers? There's a wait list. If I was to, if someone was to have a child, want to have a child right now, they better go ahead and apply and put their name on the wait list, even if they're thinking about it, right? It takes that long. How can we attract, attract more childcare facilities? How can we support more after-school programs? How can we attract AAU basketball, AAU baseball games? What's going on with the baseball field? What is it missing that is preventing AAU teams from coming to Pullman? That's an infrastructure issue. That's, that's a strong draw, right? I know it happens in Moscow. More, what about block parties? You know, a Sunnyside Block Party, a Pioneer Hill Block Party, bring us together so our kids continue to know, get to know one another.
Thank you. And Richard?
I think that's a question. And I think we're kind of conflating a couple things here. We're conflating, because the question is about involvement and recreational involvement, yes. If someone's going along and doing an activity, yes, that's, that's recreation, and they're engaging directly with the city. But how are students in our public schools, and also probably the home schooled students as well, how are they actually engaging with the city? And I think there's other ways we can do that. I spent seven years working in education with communication with schools on a regular basis. We got great things like model UNs, doing mock elections, so they had to find out about what's going on in the city and the issues that they want to talk about. Now, you're going to need to offer prizes, there has to be some kind of incentive for that, because they're not just going to do it out of the goodness of their heart, although I did like the flood barrier murals that came out of the schools recently as well. It's going to come through education, I think, mostly for that kind of involvement. But other things that can be funded, for example, ATVP, talking about healthy relationships, free summer camps. Now, that's a way to really reach the underserved populations.
Thank you. And so for the next question, Sean, you'll be starting it, and we're going to go back the other way with it. And with that, you're down to the last council member, believe it or not. And with that, Carla Delara.
Yeah. Thank you so much for applying. I can say in like my 16 days being in public office, it's been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. So really excited for, to, to be in front of everyone here and to potentially fill this seat right next to me. It'll be nice to have a buddy. Okay, so my question is, the downtown project is currently one of the main focuses in city council. Like me, you will very quickly be a part of discussions with community members and the city about it. What have you done to prepare yourself for the upcoming decisions you have to make in the next few weeks?
So over the last couple weeks, as I've decided to apply and, and actually done the application, I've spent a lot of time going over the downtown master plan. I've been reading news articles, I've been reading the actual city published documents, I've been going over, meeting I've been going over meeting notes from the city council on this, just to try and familiarize myself with. Because as everybody knows, it is a giant project, and there's a lot of history to it, there's a lot of future to it as well. So I've been trying to just understand the issues, the main issues that we're facing with it right now, as well as the public feedback that we've had from it in the past. And just trying to really look at all the information sources that I can find on the project, just to be really well informed.
Thank you. Nicole?
Yes. Up to this point, I've been working to and for myself, bring up to speed on the project itself. And through that, also gaining insight and historical knowledge from those downtown business owners and how this is going to really affect them, how it's going to affect community members in the area. And listening to their insight on what they'd like to see happen in the future, in terms of the communication moving forward with city council.
I've been intricately involved with the Downtown, Project Downtown, from the beginning, all the way from planning and going forward. I feel that some of the things in the next, you asked about what would be coming in the next couple of weeks, what would I work on? I think that once we, once bids are opened, hopefully bids will come in. I believe that one of the steps that needs to happen is that there needs to be some value engineering on the plans and see what we can actually afford. I think that we need to work with the businesses and see if there are ways that we can help them financially, because now that it's extended to six and a half months, there, especially through the football season, I think some businesses are very, very worried. And so I would like to work on ideas of where we could help them financially. Thank you. Ready? Okay. February 2020, BND Planning and Urban Design brought people together, actually in 2019. I don't know if you can remember back that far. It was fantastic process. And I, but I'm a thinker, and I know that there have been some hiccups a long way. So I went through the last five years of meetings and minutes, and I found a series of unfortunate events, nothing any one of us could have imagined. But it, no one's fault, that occurred, and that has been a concern in the terms of communication. But despite what has happened, in my opinion, is that as a city council member, I will support the decision, I will be downtown watching, I will be downtown working with our businesses to support them.
Thank you. Holly?
Thank you. Having been the executive director of the Downtown Pullman Association as this was coming online, I've been very familiar and have familiarized myself with this past city council meetings involving that project coming online, Downtown Project Plan, the 2040's involvement, the city plans and goals, the Main Street program in general at the state level. I've gone and actually talked to other Main Street programs that have had major construction projects through their communities, Port Townsend, and asked them and had them walk me through what they experienced firsthand with their business owners and property owners and community at large, and learned some valuable insight, which I'm drafting up a document to share with our Main Street program. I've worked with the BDS group, with the planning, I've also done work with Welsh Comer. And I think the key things going into that is knowledge, understanding why we made the decisions we did and how we're going to work together as a team to communicate clearly and effectively of how we spent the money, the what, the why, and the how, and get that information out to our business and property owners that are going to be directly impacted. Thank you.
Rick?
Yeah, that's a big issue. And what have I done? I've gone to council meetings and I've listened to the input. And I've also talked to a couple of you about, you know, what do you think about this? How do we, how do we deal with it? It's going to be a huge thing. So I think that I could have done more. But going forward, I think we really need to communicate and work with the businesses. Obviously, that's crucial. And so communicate, communicate, communicate.
Thank you. And Dan?
Yeah, I can't really say too much more, except that I have not read that. It's really kind of hard to make your stuff accessible. You guys got something to work on if I'm on your council. And also, the key thing to me is, I think somebody just needs to step aside from all this and just try and look for more grants to help some of these businesses. And I don't know if you can. People are going to say, well, you already have money for the project, so why do you need more money? Well, because the businesses, some of them are really going to be hurting. Some of them aren't, like, you know, the backdoors and all that. But some of them don't have backdoors. And I think that is so crucial. These businesses are, will come to town. And I think that's where my focus would be. Thanks.
Thank you. Tony?
Yeah, I was a firsthand witness of a bypass project. I grew up in Sandpoint, Idaho. And if anybody remembers Sandpoint in the 90s, early 2000s, Highway 95 went right through downtown. So if you go to Sandpoint today, it's an amazing, like a award-winning downtown. That being said, having wider sidewalks and angled parking and two-way traffic like Sandpoint is great, but it really doesn't matter if you lose your businesses because you're shut down for so long. So I think communication is key with those business owners. I think making outside the box, not just accepting that this may take six and a half months, maybe we look at it as a two-summer project, from what I've heard. Now, if you want to talk to a guy that's really passionate, talk to Nick from Black Cypress. So what have I done? I've talked to business owners downtown, talked to Mallory with the DPA, the Chamber, I've talked to many of you. But let's look for some more money, SS4A, and try to figure out how we can do that in two summers.
Thank you. Bhimush?
I have to piggyback on that, and I agree with what Tony said about the possibility of a two-year or two-summer, rather, project. And I think it can be looked at to see how possibly these businesses, especially the small businesses, are going to be affected, being closed down for so long, not having water or gas or electricity for, you know, periods of one week or so. I have come to several meetings here, and I have spoken to several others outside of, I mean, people who are actively trying to work with the city and have that communication, that dialogue, that maybe something could be worked out, because we do want our businesses to succeed. And if...
Thank you. Steve?
Yep. Just like everyone else, I read the press releases, went back and watched the old council meetings, talked with the locals, a couple of business owners. But more importantly, I started thinking about solutions that would actually help these business owners. And we know the downtown businesses make a ton of money on certain football game days. And I started thinking, is there some kind of event we can hold before, you know, construction ends to put a little bit more money in their pocket before they have to endure this? So, and that's what I started talking with other residents about, too, kind of tossing some ideas around. Thanks.
Yeah, great question. There's a sort of sense in the town that a little like death and taxes, the Downtown Project is inevitable if the bids come in. And I've been following this all along, even though the conversation has got sort of drowned by the public relations issue of the trees. I think that there's that sense that it's a fantastic possibility for us, but how do we deal with it in the next couple of weeks? And I think we'll follow an adaptation, mitigation, communication strategy. The first one is when the bids hopefully come in and we know what we've got, what we can work with, how do we adapt it to fit with our local businesses and with our residents? It's not just businesses. Residents also have a feel in this as well. How do we mitigate the damage to businesses by the difficulty for access or the traffic and losing the ballgame traffic in their shops? And how do we communicate that effectively to all of our stakeholders? That's what I think I'd like to do.
Thank you. Tremaine?
Okay, so I agree with so much of what's already been said. Yes, perhaps doing this over two summers might be the way. In the spirit of Dr. Martin with the King, I'm reminded of an event I held two summers ago in downtown commemorating Dr. Martin with the King, and of quite a few people couldn't attend the event because there was no ramp. And so it kind of hurt knowing that, you know, my event for Dr. Martin with the King wasn't accessible. And so there's so many different sides to this. There's so many different sides to it. And yes, this is where customer service meets advocacy. We must advocate for the businesses and support them in every way we can and advocate for them, be intentional about that, and also look at the bigger picture of what the implications for this in the long run and who it really helps.
Thank you. Julian?
Yes, I would just mention more of the same of what I was saying about the, I'm sure the business is going to lose revenue, so maybe if there's some way to lessen the impact of that. But I feel realistically that most contractors aren't going to want to do a two-summer project. You know, most of them want to get in, like you see all the building around, they want to get in and get out, because that's how they make their money, too. And so I think you have to balance these issues. But I do know, this is going to come up tomorrow, we have a Chamber meeting at 7:00 tomorrow, so that's going to come up, I'm sure, the issue. But a lot of the businesses downtown, they don't like it, they're kind of against it, they're worried. And so I think if there's ways to mitigate the losses to the businesses downtown, I think that would be great. That's what I would hope for.
Thank you. Connor?
Let's say, until a few minutes ago, I thought that the Downtown Project was basically set in stone, so I haven't really been thinking about it. I did attend a meeting where most people were talking about the trees. If there is room to help the trees at all, I think it'd be great to, I mean, if they are getting replaced, I think it'd be awesome to replace them with the most mature trees possible, just to minimize the damage to the area. But at the same time, whatever, yeah, if it's set in stone, it's set in stone. The two-summer plan could be okay if that's actually possible. If we're not getting bids on one summer, I'd be surprised if we got them for two. But yeah, anything the council could do to support the downtown businesses right now, I think they should, if there's any room to support them at all, I think we should.
Okay, thank you. And so that finishes the council questions. I appreciate your bearing with this, two hours into it. We're down to my question and then the closing statement, so we're getting toward the end. This one's going to start with Holly. And it flips back this way. Okay. So with my question, the city of Pullman, you know, works on a balanced budget, and we operate on a balanced budget. Tonight, you've talked a lot about priorities and things that you'd like to change, things you'd like to enhance in the city. So my question is, if the priority that we move forward on involves a budget increase, then how will you go about either increasing revenues or what other priority would you reduce in order to keep a balanced budget? And with that, Holly?
Thank you for the question. It's a rather complicated question to answer in 60 seconds, but a couple of things that come to mind are looking at what state and federal funds are available through the IIJA, the Inflation Reduction Act, the Complete Street Program, which can actually pay to put our trees back in. There's money available for programs like that, or improving our lights at different intersections and parking lots, pedestrian accessibility. Those things take time, and it takes to plan that, and we need to have resources to do that, which the city now has somebody who's dedicated to looking at those grants and having discussions. You also have a Main Street program to help focus on what grants money they can also bring into, at least on the downtown side of things. But what I would do is I would go based off of what was mentioned earlier, is take the goals and plans that the city has and look at where the biggest bang is for the amount of money that we have that's going to meet our greatest needs. And if that is 20% of our budget is going to 80% of the problem, then we need to be focusing on doing that.
Thank you. Deb?
Excuse me, Francis, can you please repeat that?
Sure.
Come in. Thank you.
So if we are doing a project that requires a budget increase, how would you increase revenue or what other priority would you reduce in order to keep the budget balanced?
Thank you. I think the city council's already decided, I believe, decided that you could raise the sales tax a tiny bit for some transportation needs. Was that a transportation district? I believe I would pay more taxes. I think the city would pay, many people in the city would pay more taxes, depending. We have some of the lowest tax rates amongst cities our size and in the area. So it's time to determine what is important. Obviously, outside source funding, our transportation gets multiple grants throughout the year from the government, and our infrastructure. If we're going to balance the budget, we need to look at our employees, our infrastructure, and our ability to have staff so that we can get the job done.
Thank you. Bobby?
Well, I think that I agree a lot with what Deb says in terms of raising taxes. I think we also need to be looking at our capital projects and value engineering our capital projects, and how can we do those as economically as possible. Obviously, we have to prioritize our goals. We may, if we're not able to do them all, we're not able to raise taxes, what's the most important? And we need to align and fall behind and work on that. And then, of course, going after grants. I don't think that the grant environment is going to be as good as it was post-COVID going forward, and so we need to be sensitive to that. But there are grants out there, and we need to take advantage of them. I think that when we're looking at revenue, I think that, you know, if we don't have enough money, we have to go back to the voters, and we have to communicate with them why we're asking them to help us increase taxes.
Thank you. Nicole?
Yes, thank you. I would first take a look at why there's a budget increase need in the first place to determine if this is a nice-to-have or a place where planning had fallen short in the beginning, and then reassess from there. And then after that, I'd take a look and work across the expertise on the city council. This would be my first rodeo on a city council. And so I would look and want to work with everyone to see what you've experienced in the past. And then I also love the idea of going after grants, whether or not we think they're out there. I think it's our responsibility to try and get what we can without having to have our citizens pay for it.
Thank you. Sean?
I'd like to say, I do applaud that we do stick to a budget and that we do have that and that we're not going into debt for these things. I think that's important as a community. I agree with what was said here as well, as far as raising taxes, alternative funding, things like that. I think one thing that could actually help with including community involvement is doing community fundraisers as well for things like that, getting people involved. So it's kind of taking an ownership of this community that we all share and we all live in. And I think that that could be something that really brings people together as well.
Connor?
I agree with people about not spending money we don't have. I don't think the city should ever go into debt for things if we really think that we need to increase the budget for something. And obviously, looking for external money is great. If it's not there, I think it's important to ask the citizens for increasing tax before we actually do that. I definitely like the community fundraiser idea. I feel like that's probably a good way to make money. Be surprised if you lost money trying to do that. Yeah, in general, always good to just not spend more than we have.
Thank you. Julian?
Well, just echo the grants and I know property tax bonds, they seem to like bonds around here. So I think bonds is a way to raise money, but I think, like people say, though, when you do try to raise money, whether it affects the taxpayers, whether it's the sales tax or the property tax, I think that it's good to know upfront, but most of these bonds are voted on. So I think, but I think people want to know, you know, a strategic process with the budgeting, that's what it comes down to. So we just need to analyze the budget and what we want to do for the city council. For the city, what we're doing for the city, it's not for the city council. City councils like to make decisions on the planning, the vision, et cetera. And so I think it's important to, for the city council, to have that ability to have public meetings for the budget or the strategic planning, and then make a decision, because you have to make a decision. Thanks.
Yes, I agree with the idea that if we had to raise the sales tax or what have you, but after we've gotten buy-in from the public, from the community, I'm going to go back to an initial idea that I can't, that I thought about, that I'm still holding on to, bringing in more youth sports. I don't know how much money AAU baseball brought Moscow, Idaho, but if we can... I don't know how much money AAU baseball brought Moscow Idaho, but if we can bring things like that into Pullman, um, that can increase revenue. Um, and yeah, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Richard?
Um, it's hard to sort of add something new to all of this. Um, I do think we, we already have a pretty generous community. Bonds get passed on a regular basis, the school ever gets passed. We've, we've got a very generous community. But I think we can also see we need to ask what the community values, and I agree with many people who have said, we ask the community what they value, but we also search for as many ways as possible to bring in money. I mean, I know that we do this already. We look for external funds, federal funding, there's grants, there's external collaborators. I, I understand we already do all of that. Um, and it's clear to me that we need a combination of all these approaches. When we set our priorities, if we do that more with community involvement, I think we're more likely to have support for the community to actually fund that. I don't think any business wants to see massive business rates go up. I mean, uh, no one wants to lose more money out of their back pocket. And I'm not a, you know, an old style European, what is it, tax and spend kind of guy. I believe in a balanced budget, like we all do, but we've got to take those priorities into account. I'm out of time.
Thank you. Steve?
Um, the best answer, of course, is going back in time. I think Nicole said it. Scope your project appropriately from the start and avoid the situation would be the best thing to do. State and federal grants are great, but they take time. You might not have time to balance that budget. So now we're stuck with, you know, hold a fundraiser or you gotta cut it from somewhere else. But I think the last option would be, um, increase taxes. So if you're trying to hold an event, it could be a festival. Um, we talked to some people about the need for an outdoor amphitheater to hold, um, more events more frequently and help raise money that way. So, thanks.
Thank you. Bumush?
Grants have been mentioned several times, so definitely looking into grants, um, as much as possible. Maybe even businesses themselves could also apply for certain grants if they are available. I think the only time I would really want to see taxes increased is, um, when we increase taxes on tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, you know, those things I think would be okay. I don't think, um, citizens should foot the bill. And, and also, um, definitely having, uh, whatever projects that we have, not only prioritizing them, but also finding the best economic way to, uh, make those projects come to fruition. So that way, um, it's a win-win situation.
Thank you. Tony?
Yeah, balancing a budget's never fun as a business owner. Um, it does take a lot of work and I do think it starts with prioritizing and communicating to the commu, community what is, you know, priority number one and how we're going to get there. Uh, I started my first business when I was 10 out of necessity because my parents, my grandparents and parents couldn't afford a brand new BMX bike, so I got a second-hand one with an SOS pad and they showed me how to shine it, take all the rust off. And I sat there thinking about, um, I could probably make enough money to go buy a new bike in the effort that I'm putting into this, and that's how I started my first business. But that's sort of been my mentality for running my business as an entrepreneur is, instead of saying we can't afford it, figure out how I can afford it. And I think that, um, maybe the city in the past has sort of thrown up their arms and you guys have hired a grant writer, so that's great, but there are a lot of federal dollars out there, Inflation Reduction Act, SS4A for streets, rail banking, those types of things. So I really think we should look at how can we get this money?
And with that, Dan?
Well, I agree with all of that. I remember during COVID when most of you folks in this council had to struggle with where the money's going to come from. That must have been really, really, really hard. In a way, it's fortunate because, because if, if this comes into fruition, if the budget either needs an increase or becomes unbalanced, then at that point, at least most of, most of everybody here has had that kind of situation. So I think in that sense, that's okay. I do think community fundraisers are a good thing, although I think marketing that in this area is wow. Um, and then, and then I, I am not about the citizens paying taxes, uh, and I'm not really about any more sin taxes. It's way up there anyway. But the fundraiser idea is a really good idea, and of course the grants are, yeah, I just agree with everybody else.
Thank you. Rick?
Yeah, lots of good ideas. I'm not a fan of increasing taxes either, and I think, um, that we do need to, would need to look at priorities hard, just like any family would have to do that if they're, um, needing to live under a budget. And so, um, we'd have to look at the priorities. I think going to the community is a great thing, communicating really clearly where we're at and, and, um, what the priorities are for our community, the communication with that, that's really important. So, um, yeah.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with our questions. Uh, it's now time for us to, for the final, which is the opportunity for you to do a one-minute wrap-up. Uh, and with that, Nicole, you'll be getting the opportunity to start, um, and then it'll go to Bobby. So Sean, you'll get the final word, uh, in, in the midst of this. So with that, Nicole?
Thank you so much, and I want to thank everybody who hung in there with us for the past few hours, not just for the people in the room, but let's also remember the people that are online as well, um, and to those that helped support this. Um, I did read through everybody's applications because I was really interested to see the different ways that people care about our community. And after hearing all of the insights here today, I know that if my background and experiences are not the council is in search for, then I know that there are people in the room who will fit that mold.
Thank you. Bobby?
Okay, um, I want to thank all of the people here tonight who signed up for this duty, and I just am so impressed with what you all have said, and, and it really does show, uh, a care and love for this community, and that's important. I want to thank the council for putting us through this exercise. I think there's been some really great ideas and thoughts that have come out, and I hope that those are helpful to you as well, and also the audience bearing with us for the evening. Um, I feel that my experience in planning, uh, would be helpful here, I think, and in capital projects, uh, because I see that infrastructure is so important because it's the thing that we all use, it's the thing that we all need, uh, and it makes our community function, and that, I, I believe I bring a perspective. Uh, and that includes how businesses, attracting businesses, if you don't have the infrastructure, you can't get them to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, I, I will ditto, uh, the two people on my left, and I would say that I hope you all consider running for something. It's not easy to put yourself out there, but it's a very, very important thing for all of us to do is to shop at election time. Uh, in closing, I want to say that even though I do my best every day, I am human and I will make mistakes. But I do promise you, um, that you will always know where I stand. I am willing to listen to varying beliefs and will be transparent in my communications. I am patient, but not a pushover. Um, I never underestimate others, no matter what their age, education level, their idiosyncrasies, where they come from, or how they write or speak. I'm a teacher at heart. I accept everyone and everyone's thoughts and beliefs. I truly believe the residents of this city need my abilities at this time. I hope you too.
Holly?
Thank you so much. I had, I agree with Nicole, looking at all the resumes and everybody who's applied here, uh, thank you so much for showing up and creating what I feel is a historic moment for our community. So thank you all. I really appreciate that. Uh, in closing, I just want to say, having spent the last seven months prepping for sitting on city council, I am prepared to step right in and get, and get, get going. I've worked with many of you on various other projects. I feel we have good communications. We may not always agree, but I feel like we have a, uh, communications, uh, established where we can find common ground moving forward. Uh, my project management skills are, are something that are just innate to me. Yeah, I went and got certified in that and I'm experienced in it, but it's very much who I am. I look at things from a risk assessment to community assessment to breaking out into small achievable steps, how do we fund it? Uh, my people skills are key, especially when people have hot tempers. I'm able to help bring those tempers down so that we can move forward on solving whatever that issue might be. So thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
I'm very impressed with all of you and, uh, your experience, your expertise. So, um, I, I'd probably be very happy for any one of you to be on the city council. But, um, my, I think what I could contribute would just be, uh, good, good people skills. I'm a good listener. Uh, I think I'm empathetic and, um, I appreciate it. It would be, it'd be a huge learning curve, but I'm willing to serve.
Okay, with that, Dan?
Wow, I, see, I think those of us, uh, I think if there's, somebody's going to make it and then the other 13 should all get together and form a city council. Um, I, I, okay, I'm, I'm losing my minute here, but I, I, I have a history in this town. I love this town. Um, this town has done, you know, as a person with a disability, sometimes it's hard to know when and where you belong. It's very difficult when you, especially when there's no eye contact and all that stuff. And I don't want to belabor this, but this town has been so good to me as a person, disability notwithstanding. And all I can say, because I know it, it may be a concern for folks, and I just want to get over that.
10 seconds.
And just say that it's a wonderful community and I want to serve it and I want to be the very best I can be.
Thank you very much. Tony?
Yeah, I think, if anything, I, I think I encourage everybody here to continue to be involved with everything that you're involved in because you do an impact. I know many of you from various things, so thank you for that. Um, I came here as a first gen, son of immigrant, and I never thought the impact that a small college town like Pullman would have on me. And I just, I envision a thriving downtown. I think, I truly believe downtown is the heartbeat of our community, um, something that my kids and my grandkids can be proud of, something that I am proud of, but I know we can be better every day. Um, if I'm chosen, what you'll get is somebody who's scrappy. I, I bootstrapped my company and, uh, my apartment above the Coog. Uh, our business meetings were frequently downstairs in early mornings because they open at 6:00 AM to clean. Um, you'll have somebody that will bring 100% in everything they do. I don't half-ass anything. I, I, I go all out for everything I do. So I would love the opportunity and, and appreciate you for listening.
Thank you. Bumush?
As everyone has said already, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity and the time to be here, and I really thank everyone. And as others have mentioned, we have a great group of people that, um, would really be able to offer a lot to, to the council and to our city. Um, this town has grown on me and, um, there is a lot that I appreciate. The, the most, well, not the most, but one of the most important reasons that we moved here was, uh, that this, this is a safe town to live and to raise a family. And I wanted that for my son, I wanted that for myself, being a single woman, and, um, I, I really appreciate what we have. I want to, um, offer all I can. I have plenty.
I'm deeply committed and involved with the city of Pullman. I, I think I can play a good part in, in helping the current city council reach the kind of goals and aims and dreams that we have for the city as we move forward. I would do that through, um, my, I worry about reaching consensus with people. I can drop ideology at the door when it comes to the better good, and I feel that there are people here, you'll, that I'd be very happy to work with. I feel that we can find that common good, and I think that I can bring my experience in multiple settings, including low government, to really help us do that. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Tremaine?
Yes. Uh, phenomenal, uh, panel of interviewees. I've really enjoyed learning more about you and hope we connect more and, uh, regardless of what happens. And, uh, you all have a tough decision to make. I don't, I don't be any of you. Uh, what I bring, um, I bring someone with a, a learning curve. I have a lot to learn if I was to get in this position. However, um, I'm a mindful leader. Um, I believe in, um, creating courageous connections, um, whether the folks agree or agree to disagree. Um, when it's all said and done, we'll be, we'll feel connected and in relationship with one another. That's what I'm passionate about. That's what I believe in. Changing perceptions, helping folks see one another and truly see each other. That's, um, what I'll bring because that's, that's what I do, not just for a living, but how I live my life.
Thank you. Julian?
Okay, when I was applying for this, I, I honestly say if I hadn't worked with some of the, known some of the council members, I wouldn't have ever came here because the interactions with the council members that I do know and have worked with on the chamber or whatever, just personally are really something, a team I feel I could work with. And team building, teams are really critical. And, um, I guess my main thing is like when I worked in HR, customer service, or how you treat the customers, and this, in this case would be the constituents, is really critical, and I think, um, I could do a good job with that. And I guess there's a duel. This is actually, the reason when I was thinking about applying for this, this land here is our original treaty area, and, and, you know, there was a Palouse ban, like it says out in the room there, that's after the Palouse ban that we're, we're in Esperance. So I, it was kind of an interesting, uh, thing that I felt, but I think I would really enjoy and be supportive of the council and supportive of the community. I, I like, I love Pullman. The people I've met are here are really welcoming and friendly, and, uh, it's really important that, I, I also agree that we could start a think tank here with the political line.
Thank you. Then Connor?
Um, first, I just want to thank everyone that's here tonight. I think regardless of who gets chosen, that's going to be someone that really cares about the community, and I, I think pretty, all, all of you would be a great choice. Um, I heard a lot of great ideas tonight. It was really, it's awesome to see how many people care, and yeah, it's how many people turned out. Um, I, I would love the opportunity to serve on the council. I feel like I could do a good job. I have the free time and the energy to, to help, I don't know, to help Pullman grow into the future and just keep being awesome. Um, yeah, that's about that.
Thank you. Sean?
Well, I don't envy the decision that you have to make, but like others have said, I'm, I'm happy with whatever outcome. Um, I've always been taught and I've always thought, and I, I try to teach my, my students as well, that the, the essence of leadership is service and that the essence of service is love. And I do love this community. Um, in my, my time that I've been here, um, I've had opportunities to serve the community in different, different, um, capacities. Uh, I've had opportunities to get to know people from very, very different walks of life, different experience, different abilities, um, and, and had opportunities to counsel with them and, and to work with them. Um, and I can truly say that this, the Pullman community feels like a home where I want to be and where I want to help it be better. Um, so that's why I wanted to do this, um, and like everyone else has said, I, I, I truly believe that anybody in this room that's, that's applied will be a great fit in this as well.
Well, once, I, I want to echo, as, as the council said, how much we appreciate each of you coming out, uh, and the quality that you bring and, and the passion you bring to this community, it shows. Uh, and I feel Pullman, I mean, this, this is a great representation of Pullman and I, and I appreciate that, um, and for, for each of you. Uh, and as you said, it's going to be a difficult decision, uh, as, as we get into this. Uh, so where are we going to go next is actually, we're going to break into executive session and, and there's, and some things that I need to, I'll need to read related to executive session. The question I'm going to ask, do you need a, a D- so, it's, it's been.
Do you see the clock?
I'm, I'm asking the question. So at this time, the city council will adjourn to executive session pursuant to RCW 4230 10 1H to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to public office, providing, provided in, any, provided any interview of such candidate and final action appointing the candidate to elective office shall be in a meeting, open, public. So what that means is there are no decisions, there's no votes that happen in executive session, we just discuss qualifications, any action happens out here. The executive session is expected to last 15 minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend the executive session, someone will return to announce the anticipated additional time needed by the city council. Council does anticipate taking action following the executive session. Uh, it's now 9:37. I'm going to give you four minutes, so don't dawdle with people, just go and then we'll meet. Uh, so we will start at 9:41, or 42. Night, we'll start at 9:41. Night, we'll start at 9:42, the executive session. City Council is extending the executive session for 15 minutes. 15 minutes.
City Council is extending their executive session for five minutes. Five minutes.
City Council is extending the executive session for five more minutes.
City Council is extending their executive session for an additional five minutes. Five minutes. City Council is extending their executive session for an additional five minutes. Five minutes. City Council is extending their executive session for three minutes. Three minutes. City Council is extending their executive session for an additional three minutes. City Council is extending their executive session an additional three minutes, please. Three minutes.
City Council is extending their executive session for an additional three minutes.
City Council extends their executive session an additional three minutes. Three minutes. Executive session has been extended for three minutes.
So it's now...
Where's Nate?
I'm missing.
I'm missing. I was like, yeah, I'm not.
Okay, so it's now at 10:47, coming back from executive session. And with that, this is a Ward One position. And so I would entertain a motion from our current Ward One.
I would to move that Tremaine Gaither be appointed to the Ward One council seat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those favors, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, congratulations. Tremaine? And I definitely want to thank everyone that has been a part of this. I will definitely be reaching out to you because I'd like to have you all involved in our committee's missions within the city and involved. So I definitely don't want this to end here for any of you. I appreciate you coming out and being involved. With that, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.